If you take role from the left to my right.
On my left?
Yes, I am.
Brian Rockoff.
Lyndon Novak, here.
Randy Brinkman.
Rachel Walsh.
Mark Zieso.
Wow.
All present, calls me to order. Adoption of agenda.
Move, we adopt the agenda.
Move. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, didn't hear anything? New business? Meg, if you introduce the case to us?
Absolutely. So this evening, we have a property over here on Romzy coming to us for a lot coverage variance. Here is particularly a small lot and looking to go ahead and have an expansion here. Um, let's see. Their, their new swimming pool and the pool house that are proposed are going to reduce the current lot coverage by replacing most of the non-permeable surfaces with crushed limestone, which of course are permeable. The variance request we're looking for is 4.3% over the required maximum of 25% for maximum lot coverage of 29.3%. I believe we have some applicants here. If you want to come up into the microphone, go ahead and introduce yourself and give us a little summary on what we're looking at here.
Great. Um, my name is Sabrina. I'm with Moser Design and I'm here on behalf of the homeowner, Harry Chapman, at 328-77-ROMZY um, to here and to present to you kind of requesting our approval to exceed the required 25% allowed impervious surface coverage on a property that is currently non-conforming. Um, in this case, we believe we meet the standards for practical difficulty and appreciate your consideration to approve this request. Firstly, the property is already existing non-conforming with its coverages. Instead of adding to this, we actually found ways to reduce the non-conformity by implementing uh, kind of the proposed improvements by approximately 2,176 square feet, which was that, I believe, 4.3% over. Um, for example, we'll be changing the sport court to a highly permeable turf, which we kind of worked with Bill going over to ensure that it was just as permeable as the crushed limestone that you allow in the village. Um, we also decided to make some patio spaces crushed limestone as well to ensure the permeability. Um, and then we added a few kind of hard surface patios. Um, but we wanted to make sure majority of it was permeable and being able to implement this.
So what's the, are you putting down a fabric or something?
For the turf.
Yeah.
It would be basically the same base as the crushed limestone. So the crushed limestone usually is on a kind of a compacted limestone base to kind of be able to keep it stable. So it would be on that same base and then uh, limestone sand goes on top of it and then the turf is secured on top of that. So it's completely draining all the way through.
What type of turf is this? Is that artificial turf?
Yes.
Cause I thought that was against the ordinance now, having artificial turf because of the forever chemicals that are in it and make it.
Um, from the specifications that I sent Bill, he said it was all within the means of the ordinance.
I know Bill spent a lot of time looking at this and talking with you there. He did feel confident that the material they were proposing would be meeting those specifications to make it permeable and.
And not releasing any chemicals or anything.
We had a case earlier that was using artificial turf and it was for because of forever chemicals. That was withdrawn and forever chemical type material has been banned in the village because we're on wells.
I'm not sure. Do you know what material the artificial turf is going to be made out of? Maybe there are different type of.
I'm sure it's possible there are different types.
But I'm not sure that that actually passed.
The banning of the turf?
Yeah.
Well, then they can drink the water.
Yeah, that's exactly because that was.
And that would make sense. Cause I know Bill spent a lot of time reviewing this and talking with you here and felt confident that it was allowable.
Yeah, we worked with him back and forth on different brands and the specific kind of brand that we landed on was one that he was very comfortable with having.
So the sports court is still going to be there under a different material?
It'll still be the same shape, but it will not be a hard surface. It'll be permeable.
Yeah, the one that we were talking about Randy was, it wasn't just because of the hards of the.
Oh, I understand.
No, it was the rest of it too.
Well, but we did have discussions about the.
Forever chemicals.
The.
The chemicals.
Artificial turf and the chemicals and that there were studies that showed that it was leaching into the water table and of course we're all on wells. So um, it did not make it past council at this point, but.
It, we have to, I hate to say it this way, but as much as I agree with the fact that it's not a good thing, um, we can't do anything about it.
I understand it. No, I'm not trying to legislate, just trying to point out what's, what's there and what's not. Um, do you have a, can you show up the print on the screen?
It seems to me the homeowner should be concerned about this as well.
And everybody around him.
Because the wells, she's gonna have a well and so this could get into her well.
When you look at the setback on the, it could be in the top part of the screen there. North is up. Yeah. And it looks like the pool house is built into the setback. It had dotted lines showing the variance setback right here on the village. And I see a pool house, it looks like what, 80% of it's in the setback.
That is correct.
Just a split back, dotted.
Yep.
Wait, wait. Probably 75 or 80%. Is that, is that 10 feet? 11, almost 11, 10, 9, and the 1.
Is the asphalt driveway in front staying in place?
Yes, the front is not being touched.
So your reduction from.
From 34.
34% to 29%. Essentially comes out of tennis court area. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Tennis court area and then kind of reconfiguring the patios up by the house. Um, and then, right now it's a hard surface that kind of extends past the loja that's currently there. Um, and then we reconfigured those as well as made those crushed limestone.
So you're getting rid of the pool?
No, the pool is, is new.
Okay.
Sports court gone, pool in.
No, sports court's there. It's just a different surface than it was originally. So instead of being cement or whatever it was going to be.
Where are you planning to dispose of the water when they drain this pool? Because there is issues, you know.
So we, yeah, and so we've implemented a whole drainage system and have a leaching basin installed kind of on that lowest part of the um, property, kind of in front of the sport court.
You talking where the wetlands are up in front?
It's.
On the side?
Right here, we've added the leaching basin. So all of this property, basically all of this kind of naturally creates here, so it's continuously going into there and then the leaching basin kind of helps it dissipate below grade. So we wanted to ensure that.
So it's leaching into their front yard, is that what you're telling us?
Side yard.
No, yeah, it's staying kind of still behind the house, but it goes into a catch basin and then it naturally percolates um, through the pea stone base that's around it, kind of naturally back into the ground.
Does that side seem like it was pretty wet? And it's usually always wet from what I've seen.
Well, with the property to the south of it, that is where the culvert on the road and it kind of naturally gets a lot of water kind of right in this area regardless because of this property here. So it seems like from looking at the contours and the grading, a lot of this property as well as others and the road naturally drain onto that kind of side of the property of both lots.
So that leaching place, does it have a cavity or where the water sits?
Where water, so yeah, so it's like a 24 inch catch basin that gets dropped into the ground and then there's like a six to eight foot wide pea stone area below the grass that sits. And then so as the water gets collected into that basin, um, from the swale as well as any drainage downstream pipes, then it naturally percolates out into that crushed stone and then kind of into the grade down below. It's a way to kind of help collect the water and then let it slowly dissipate out.
And it's, it's at the lot line, so the neighbors next to them.
There's no one on that side of the property.
There's another lot there.
There is another lot and it has, there's a culvert right underneath the road that shoots out right here and there's kind of holding water right here. But it is along the side of the property line. Correct.
Uh, this is round your way right here.
Right.
There's another house right here. And there's a lot right here.
Meg, have we heard anything from any of the neighbors?
No, we haven't. No letters, no public comments, no questions or inquiries from any of the surrounding properties.
Just because the lot to the south of them, I don't think there's a house on it.
No.
But that doesn't mean we can. What?
It's always been a wetland.
Yeah, but it's still a legal lot.
Yeah.
We can't add water to it.
Yeah, yeah.
So you reduced the uh, the lot, the uh, coverage by 5%?
Mm-hmm.
But that really came by adjusting the tennis court?
So yeah, by adjusting the tennis court and then like I said, slightly adjusting the upper patios um, to be crushed stone, those kind of get a little bit canceled out by the pads, but ma- majority is that uh, sport court and then a little bit of the patio up, existing patio up by the house.
But there isn't, there is not a pool there now?
No.
Could you adjust the patio size around the pool?
There is, so this is all south, like this is all lawn around the pool. The only hardscape is the pool house, these two chase pads and then the pool itself. This is all crushed stone on these little patios and landing right here and then this is an existing like loja up here.
Could the, could the exposed aggregate pads be moved to the other side so the pool house could be moved in a bit to reduce the inclusion onto the setback?
It's something we can certainly look into.
Yeah, that's. I don't know if the classification, the tennis court area is considered as a structure because it's used, it takes up the space. And so your setbacks on both sides look like you've exceeded the maximum you can use. I'm questioning why that isn't down as a variance request.
Sorry?
You, you, you included, you've intruded on the setbacks on both sides with the tennis court and with the, the pool house.
Well, the tennis court was already existing.
I know, I know it was there, I was saying, but the pool house was not and you're, you're limited on, you cannot take a setback on both sides at the same time to the maximum. And I don't know if the bill has seen that or not, that's why I'm questioning it. Meg, do you know anything?
Yeah, well, I talked to Bill about it extensively and when we were talking about it, he was um, pretty adamant that you guys had been in good conversations and that he had reviewed everything that we were seeing here tonight. Uh, that, you know, given that the lot is already existing, non-conforming and providing those constraints, um, that really his concern and what we were addressing this evening was at 4.3% that was gonna.
Understand.
So I know that he's reviewed. I would be surprised if that would be something that Bill hadn't already discussed with you if it was a concern, but.
Yeah, he didn't mention it to me.
Yeah, I mean, you're right, we, we are here to hear.
Yeah, and here's your, here's your two setbacks.
That's 10 feet. Yeah. When there should be 20.
The question you're asking is, sorry, is why, why isn't that variance on this?
Agenda.
Agenda, yeah. I looked at it and said, I don't, trying to figure that out.
Because the materials that they've changed it to is permeable.
Take it out of this, absolutely.
The pool house should be on here.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
You are many feet into the.
Setback.
Setback. Yeah.
Okay.
Does that still leave any accessibility for DTE and Solon to get back in there?
Yes.
Cause they seem like they parked their trucks over there a lot.
Well, they, they certainly can't on the other side.
There's about 11 feet behind the pool house.
Yeah, but I'm.
Yeah, but on the other side, there's not, there's maybe three.
For the sport court, or you know, on the sport court side? Yeah.
Yeah, there's maybe three feet.
And they, they need to sometimes bring heavy equipment back in.
Was that variance granted originally for the sport court since it's so close?
No, we haven't heard this before.
Has there been no much or any prior?
Yeah, that's interesting, that's not in the review, right? That there had been a prior variance there? Do you know if you had ever had a. Cause that I would be curious about, I mean, of course, the court was already constructed and obviously um, changing material, making it more permeable, that's great. I'm just curious based on its positioning, if a variance was granted originally for the sport court.
So where the fire pit in it's gonna be crushed limestone?
Correct.
You know, we don't permit the sport courts necessarily, is it possible that that was constructed because it didn't require the permit to come over there and then we wouldn't know this?
What's the phrase that's missing is it, it doesn't say legally non-conforming. That is not in any of the comments here. So, you know, when we look at it, we're looking at 34.6%.
Yep.
Coverage that's not supposed to exceed 25%. And I can't get answers to that question. And I know they're reducing it by 5%, but it's still 4.3 over.
I think when our coverage was originally, what our coverage is, it wasn't 25%.
I mean, it, it certainly looks from the drawings like the sports court could be moved in several feet closer to the pool. And it also looks like you could move those cement pads to the other side of the pool and move the pool house in a little bit. You know, our, our problem is not saying, look, you're a nice lady and you should have this, it's pretty, but it's the next thing that comes along and the next thing because we're setting a precedent with everything that we do.
Well, I can't move the sport court, I mean, it's already in.
Oh, it's already in, okay.
It's, yeah, that's been there.
Sports court's been there, that's why I'm curious.
Well, what, what you're saying, but the sports court is here changing material on the sports court.
Right.
But that's the, the, right now it's a classic, whatever.
Oh, the top court, the top.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're removing the material that's already there.
And we're replacing it.
With a permeable surface, but the sports court has already been.
Yes.
How long ago? 10 years?
Yeah, the problem is like with fences, every time you change the material.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's a non-conforming use and so every time you change the material, it's like we, we go through this with fences that people's fences are falling down and they want to put another one up, but the fence that is there is a non-conforming use and as soon as you take it down and change the material, that, that use is no longer available.
But what you're looking at is the coverage of it.
Yeah.
What's, what's it, what's currently in the area where the pool's gonna be?
Just grass.
So when it's just grass right now, the property is not, is not legal, is not non-conforming?
No, it is.
It is, it is. It's all the exist, all the existing hardscape as it currently sits today is that 34 point, 34.6% coverage.
And that's because of the patios?
Patios, sport court, the house, the front driveway, everything.
Okay. Well, given the house is staying and the front driveway is staying. Then we're dealing, what's, what's in the backyard?
And the sport court is staying.
And the sport court.
But the sport court's non-conformity is decreasing with the permeable material.
Right, so, so the permeable material kind of balances out the non-conformity.
Exactly.
So the, the biggest offender, so to speak, at this point is the pool house.
Right.
Which is almost entirely in the setback. So I mean, it would seem that if those pads could be moved over, how many feet do they take up and how far could that pool house be moved out of the setback?
Yeah, they're 10, they're 10, so that would bring the 10 out of the setback, or pretty close.
But that wouldn't be ideal for you because you've got your pool house there and that's where you want the cement.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. It's just you've got those two cement pads in front of it.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, really.
Yeah.
I can understand. Think of it as a swim up bar.
Could they move the pool house and make it smaller?
This, if this goes in and this goes over close to the sport court.
That's what I'm saying, if these pads go here, this can move in. If these are 10 feet, that takes it entirely, I mean, it's not gonna take it entirely, but you're gonna be talking about.
You want a path in front of it.
A couple of feet instead of eight feet.
If you move the pool itself closer to the, closer to the sports court, rotate it 90 degrees.
You can do that?
Rotate it 90 degrees.
You can't do that.
No. I know.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, question that we're, you know, increasing the permeable surface space by replacing the, the material that the sport court is made out of, but the other question that has now come up that I haven't heard from Bill on is the fact that the pool house is setting so much in that setback.
I mean, it's still within our backs line and I'm, there is plenty of space. And the TT doesn't necessarily come for a yard, they always go on the other side of the fence.
It's, it's the set, it's a side yard setback, which you have on each side of the property. And with the sports court is, you're way into it, you're almost at the line and on the other side, you've, you've encroached it heavily. So there's a limit to what you can do. You can't do both sides at the same time and use up all the setback.
Yeah, it, it's not a matter of safety or somebody being able to get back there, it's a matter of what.
It's space between neighbors.
What the regulations are in Franklin for setbacks for corners, side yards, front and back.
So if we were to table today, would we need to come, could we update what our application is currently sitting to add in the setback once we, I'll have to review with Bill and just verify.
I have just a question. Like you have been working with Bill and he didn't have an issue with it.
Yeah.
Another neighbors have an issue with it.
Well, it's not really an issue, the neighbors are, you know.
Everyone's kind of far heart.
I understand it.
It, it's still a non-conforming, I'm just seeing if I can get Bill really quick.
Where's the well located?
Looks like it's in front of the house.
Yeah, the.
Existing wall is right here, in front of the house.
Yeah, it is.
Where's the septic field or is it pressure sewer?
Maybe the septic is in the front.
I don't believe.
Are you on the pressure sewer or?
You're not.
You don't know?
I'm on the septic, well.
You are on septic?
Yeah.
And the question is, where's, where's the septic field?
I'm not sure.
That would make sense.
Sanitaries there.
It would, it would be, it's contrary, usually.
Sanitaries here.
The septic's in one area and the well's not next to it.
Right, no, I know, that's what I'm saying, maybe the well is somewhere else.
Your well is in the front that's on here.
Leaching basin here, you're right here.
So Bill is saying that the pool house only has to be 10 feet from the side or rear yard as an accessory building?
Say that one more time, sorry.
Bill then is saying that the pool house is only required to be, um, the, the setback for that is only 10.
10 feet.
10 feet from the side or rear yard as an accessory building.
Okay, so it is.
And so by that, if that's a standard, then the pool house is within that and that would be why Bill hadn't brought that up. Thus why in the report, we're looking at, you know, not, that's not part of the variance that we're requesting and instead it's the lot coverage that we're looking at, which we are reducing the non-conformity, um, you know, from the 34 down to the 29.
Correct.
And so the variance is for that, what is it, 4.3?
4.3, yeah. Yes, thank you.
So we're gonna get it down below the 4.3? To get the, the variance request down below the 4.3?
I mean, if he's okay with it, sports court's already there.
Oh, I'm not sure it is.
And they're using a different material.
Got a question?
I wouldn't want to use that material.
When you were drawing there.
I wouldn't want to use that material.
Down at the bottom.
If they do.
You've got, where's, existing sanitary something and.
Nothing I can see, no.
Something again. What is?
Those are existing sanitary manholes, so those are existing, we're not proposing anything, that's just what's currently on site.
Who's using those?
That's just that when the civil engineer goes out there, he just notes everything that's existing.
So were they hooked up to anything?
I'll have, we'll have to look, but as of right now, I don't.
So Bill is saying that had the pool house really required a variance for that setback, that he would have denied it right away and wouldn't have even recommended it to ZDA because the pool house uh, only has to be the 10 feet and it was accommodating that and we were reducing the non-conformity by changing that material is why it's over here and recommended.
He doesn't, so the sports court is structured then?
Yeah.
He does not?
No.
Then really what we're talking about is a very minimal.
Yes.
Coverage variance.
In fact, a request that's reducing the non-conformity too.
We have forced septic and well is in the front to the left.
You said what for the septic?
We have forced septic.
All pressure sewer?
No.
No, septic.
Four sewer, I'm sorry. He said four sewer, no septic.
Ah, okay.
You're on the pressure sewer.
Okay. No, that's helpful, that makes more sense.
I think why there's manholes and stuff that's there and.
What?
So you are on the pressure.
Yes.
We have to work such a way to reduce the non-conformity by doing this project. Let's go to finding facts then.
Okay.
Are there, are there any additional comments? Do you have any more additional comments? Uh, any questions from the board at this point?
I, I, I make one additional comment. I know, hey, we take very good care of our yard, I know you have no doubt of that and we're just trying to prove it and enjoy our home more.
Well, I understand that.
No, I know, I'm just telling you and we will continue to do that, so we've been doing that for a long time and we love our home, so.
Okay. Uh, so no other questions, I'd like to move to finding the facts and to clarify for you, our procedure is very simple. Well, we had the introduction of the program and the case before us and you've had a chance to talk. There's no public here to. There's no public here to ask for public comments. We have questions from the board, if they have any, we air those publicly. Then at this point, we close discussion and we'll have what's called a finding of facts. And we'll state facts on which, we will vote on entire group of finding of facts and those facts are what we'll base our decision on. So it's not an arbitrary decision, it's based on, on fact. And then at that point, we'll entertain a motion from the board on what we want to do at that point. It has to be in the affirmative and we'll have to correct it if it's not in the affirmative. So based on that, I'm, I'm open to discussion of finding of facts. Simple, listen, zoning RL.
The sports court, the material has been changed, so it is now permeable, so will not...
It's proposed to be changed to a permeable.
Proposed to be changed to a permeable surface.
Which would be, which would be required in any variance.
And also, pool house is in fact in conformity in allowing ten point seven six feet for an accessory building.
Yes.
In the, in the setback.
In the setback, side setback.
In the setback.
I'm going to try and word this correctly.
Please do.
The requested variance from current ordinance is a four point three percent additional coverage of nonpermeable surface. However, that is an improvement from the existing nonconformity of thirty-four point six percent by changing the sport court and by changing of patio materials to a permeable material, which would allow the water drainage.
Think you got that right?
Well said.
Is that good, right?
Yes.
Good job on needle threading.
It's not legal jargon, just trying to clarify what's going on here because...
I have to go call a neighbor and my phone is in the car, so my house does not burn down. Oh, excuse me, let me go call my neighbor.
We'll take a break for a minute.
Excuse me, I'm very sorry, but I'm fond of my house.
We appreciate you coming, don't burn down the house.
All right, so I think we're back here, seven fifty?
I'm just thinking of the, yes, trying to think of this, we need any other facts or are we there?
Well, we don't want to state the obvious, it's not an historic district, okay?
Right.
We do not, we have not had any comments from neighbors pro or con. It has been properly published and been given notice to people. And we've had no public hearing here to make comments whatsoever. So those basically covered. And I guess the question, do you feel there's enough information to, to vote on, to have a motion and decide? Do you have enough information to make a decision on?
I do.
Someone?
I'm good. Make the motion.
I need a motion.
I move we consider, let's see, I'm trying to think of the right wording, and you did the affirmative. I move that we approve this variance.
You move that we approve the request for variance?
Yes.
And grant the, grant the variance of four point three percent?
Yep.
Over the required twenty-five percent minimum. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Pass unanimously.
All right, thank you everyone for being patient while we sorted that out. I'm sorry, our building official was... ...this evening.
Thank you everybody.
I don't know how I missed it.
They have your personal email sent? We're not finished, let's finish that?
Yeah, oh, wait a second, we got to, we got to vote on the prior minutes.
I move we accept the prior minutes?
No, I think I got an error on, on that because there was, Dana, you showed there was not many, there was only a few people absent. Wasn't there a person who was on, on council now that was on the board?
Other than that, I guess we're all set.
What was it reading, who, who were you looking at?
I thought there was someone who was missing from the last meeting.
I don't think so.
There should be nine and there's eight.
Oh, Quincy.
Oh.
But was he at the last meeting?
No.
Yeah, he was, Quincy was at the last meeting, wasn't he?
We didn't have six, did we have six votes the last time? I don't think so. Well, they showed Quincy on, hey, show Quincy present.
Quincy was here last time.
Okay.
Yeah, I think he was.
All good? Okay. Yeah, I move we adopt the minutes of the last meeting.
Move in second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Set the motion to close the meeting? Move we close the meeting?
Move in second, thank you, we're done.
Second.